All right. Good evening. Good evening, everybody. I want to call to order the Euclid Township Planning Commission meeting Wednesday, February 3rd, 2021. This meeting is being recorded. Uh, we, we've reviewed the minutes of the meeting. Do I have any additions or corrections? If not, can I have a motion to accept?
A move that we accept the minutes from January meeting.
Second.
I have a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. All right. Passes. All right. This evening, we are going to be having a presentation from Autobahn Management Group Corporation about the Turnpike Interchange. It's a preliminary final land development plan, and we're going to have a discussion on it this evening. Uh, who is presenting for them this evening?
Good evening. Bernadette Kearney here on behalf of the applicant. And we do have several consultants. I see Kestra Kelly is here. I believe Eric Austin Chuck is on the line, John Nielsen and Ron Nielsen, Brad Macy. And if I missed anyone, let me know. That's who I could see on my screen. So as you recall, we were back before the planning commission in August and September because we had to go through the conditional use process. We did go through that process and received the conditional use approval for the three distribution warehouses in, uh, in November. And in early January, we filed the land development plans. We did file them as preliminary slash final plans, which is one of those waivers that we are requesting. We haven't received all the review letters back yet. We've received several, but not all of them. So this is just going to be kind of a general overview. Um, Ron could put up the plan or Ron or Tara could put up the plan and you'll see, um, it's, it's very similar to what you saw at the time we presented the conditional use application to you. And there you can see it up on the screen. Uh, what you see in, in purple is respecting the environmental areas that are on, on the site. And then you see the three buildings and what's in green and the park area you'll see uh, sort of in the center of the plan. So, uh, what we were, um, wondering is if you wanted to ask us specific questions in reference to the plan, since we haven't had a chance to get all the review letters back from consultants um, and, and just give you a general overview of, of the plan again.
Okay. Sounds like a plan.
Okay. Uh, I will say that, and McMahon noted on their review letter, which we do have. Uh, we, we are pulling before the zoning hearing board. We're scheduled to be in front of them on February 17th in reference to the, um, off-street loading burst located in the front of the lot and, uh, some minor flood plain relief. So we have been scheduled for the zoning hearing board. Yep. Somebody's pointing those out, um, for that relief. And, um, Kestra, I'll let you talk about just the overall plan.
Sure. Thanks. Good evening, everybody. Hope you all enjoyed the snow. So to Bernadette's point, this plan is substantially similar to what we had shown you for conditional use. Obviously now, you know, it's a fully engineered plan and there's a little bit more detail to it. You know, just to remind you, it is three warehouse distribution buildings. We have building A, that's a little bit over a million square foot. Building C, which is a little bit over 600,000 square feet. I'm sorry, building C, which is 150,000 square feet. And building B, which is a little bit over 600,000 square feet. This project, you know, as Bernadette did mention, there are some environmental features on the site. And the project has gone through great lengths to honor those features and really, you know, minimize any, if not just very minimal impacts to them. So some of the impacts is the driveway itself onto the site off of Sherry Boulevard. Um, the entrance closest to Route 100. This location was chosen because there was already a large culvert that was installed across one of the streams as part of the previous plan for Vanguard. Um, and then, then there was also two smaller crossings that are existing. So while this does cross the streams, um, it really is utilizing existing infrastructure to the maximum extent feasible. So one of our waivers is that we are doing some work with it close to within the 50 feet of the environmental features. And that's a case right there, the driveway of what we are doing. So just to jump into the waivers, we are requesting three waivers. We have, uh, section 304.1 preliminary plan. We are proposing this to be preliminary final plan. We have a waiver from section 402.1 for the scale of the drawing. For, um, this parcel, we are proposing a lot consolidation. So for that one specific plan, we did a different scale than the ordinance requires just so that we could fit the whole plan on one sheet. We thought it would be a little bit too confusing to break that one up. And then section 214 dash 15T of the stormwater management general requirements. This is the one I mentioned earlier. We are doing some disturbance within 50 feet of streams and wetlands. And that is very isolated in nature. And it's really limited to what is allowable within the code, which is our driveway entrance. Like I mentioned, we do have a little bit of the similar impact with the proposed, um, change in the jug handle at Route 100 and Sherry. And then also some of those impacts associated with the trail system with the park. Um, so again, you know, the, the onsite stuff I touched on, you know, the project does propose some off-site traffic improvements, um, which I'm sure that Eric can talk to more, but that's limited to work along Sherry Route 100 and the jug handle at Sherry and Route 100. We are also, you know, protecting and maintaining the existing historical structures on the site. And so that's why on this exhibit, you don't see any of the light green kind of in the middle of this corridor. Sorry, I'm moving my mouse like you can see it, but in the middle of the corridor, because we are really trying to stay out of that, protect the existing environmental features, protect the existing historical features. The site does pose different stormwater throughout the site. We have both above ground and above ground, and we're utilizing infiltration to the maximum extent feasible. Um, and we are making accommodations to allow for a potential future connection to, um, Route 100 on the turnpike, um, which would need to be approved by Turnpike Commission, but
It doesn't matter.
Williams allowing to occur.
So this plan doesn't show that, that access to the turnpike?
No, if, if whoever has control of the screen, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if it's Tara or Ron. If you zoom in a little bit, we do have that connection, um, dashed in to show that we've accommodated for it and, you know, it can be constructed at
Oh, I see it now.
Yeah. So yeah, we, we've made accommodations for it. It would not, you know, be built necessarily at the time of this project, but the design allows for it to be incorporated in the future.
Is that an interest? What is the issue with the jug handle? Is it just too sharp? Uh, a turn now for trucks or what's the issue with that?
If you want to get it too technical, I'll have to have the traffic engineer jump in. But yes, I believe it's a turning movement and stacking issue with the jug handle.
Okay. No, that's fine. I just was wondering.
Yeah, that's about as deep as I can go about traffic.
All right.
Open if you'd like to hear more.
I can remember where we put that when that was put in actually. So, seemed like, seemed like it was fine at the time, but it, I, I figured it had to be something with the trucks turning radius or something.
So who does have information on that? Did you say Eric?
Yeah. Tara, are you running the screen? If you could zoom in on that section that might make it a little easier. So there's a couple of aspects that we're looking at down at the intersection here. And as it gets zoomed in specifically with the jug handle, uh, it's not necessarily with, with regard to the ability of trucks to make the maneuver. But if you note and probably good when you drive it, when you come out of the jug handle, you're almost right at 100 already. Uh, it drops you off very close to the intersection. So the goal and the changes there is to move the jug handle intersection away from Route 100 such that we can provide additional stacking, vehicle stacking, uh, at the traffic signal at Route 100. And still accommodate trucks with, with this intercept, new intersection as well.
Did you have to acquire more right away there?
Uh, no, they, um, the, uh, land that we're utilizing, well, the town, the jug handles on township land and the land to the, I'll call it southwest is controlled by the applicant.
I think since you're, since you're, we're focusing on this area right now of Sherry Boulevard and, and 100. Maybe you can just, um, briefly just talk about the, the comments about what changes you're going to make to this intersection. This seemed to be have a lot of comments on it.
Yeah, happy to. If you could zoom in a little bit further, Tara, let me make a little I'll start at the intersection. I'll kind of branch out from, from with regard to the improvement package that we're looking at. So I noted the, the relocation of the jug handle intersection again to provide additional stacking. In addition to that, we're going to provide, we're proposing to provide an additional lane on both sides of Sherry Boulevard as it approaches 100, uh, again, to add capacity. So as you're traveling from the jug handle side, currently there's three lanes as it approaches Route 100. Uh, we're looking to add an additional lane to increase capacity there. Uh, when we do that, uh, we have to modify the alignment of the intersection uh, across 100, and that gives us the ability to provide an additional lane coming westbound, I'll call it on Sherry as you're approaching Route 100. So as that stands today, there are four lanes that approach there. Uh, so we're looking at adding an additional one for five. Um, the biggest improvement that I see both from a capacity standpoint and a safety aspect is as you're traveling away from the site on Sherry Boulevard approaching Route 100 and you want to go, uh, 100 north, we're providing a lane there. Um, along Sherry Boulevard, but also all along Route 100 as, as the cursor is showing along the, the property frontage there such that vehicles can come down, uh, along Sherry and essentially have a free flow movement to get up to speed on Route 100 before they encounter traffic on Route 100. It's 55 mile per hour speed limit. So there will be, they will have their own lane to do that. Um, and then that will, neck down as it approaches, uh, the turnpike, uh, there. So those are the capacity improvements. Uh, you'll note if, you can see on the northern leg of, of Route 100, there's an existing pedestrian crossing. Uh, we're looking to maintain that in, uh, the same length as, as it exists today. And what you see there is it's crossing to a pork chop island, which delineates that free flow right turn movement I described. And then they can cross from there under a controlled, uh, by the signal to, over to the, uh, anticipated proposed park. So those are the capacity improvements. Obviously along with that, there are, uh, timing adjustments, signal upgrades. Any pedestrian upgrades that need to be done with regard to the, the pork chop island introduction and such, we'll be, we'll be completing that as well. Traveling, yes.
Excuse me, Eric. Uh, how about the, uh, the trail that comes, uh, westbound on Sherry Boulevard? We, with respect to this turning lane, the new turning lane, which I think is a great idea. How will you protect, uh, travel, uh, walkers and possibly bikers there too?
Right. So the way we have it evaluated and described in our study and, uh, reviewed currently by McMahon, we haven't heard from PennDOT yet, but, uh, what we're proposing there is a controlled crossing such that when a pedestrian comes to that location, they can get a, a red ball indication for the right turn movement. So essentially they would be crossing the, uh, pork chop over to the pork chop under a, uh, a red signal control. And then they can cross again, Route 100. Good. Phase there.
Good. Thank you.
And then on, all, all along the park that the trail will be maintained along Sherry. In addition to that, as we move away from 100, uh, along Sherry, you know, along the site frontage and the access points, we coordinated with, with the township staff regarding the configurations along Sherry Boulevard. And if, you know, for those that drive it often, you'll note that, you know, there are very high and banked medians along there with landscaping as well. Uh, there's landscaping along the sides of the road that are, that are pretty close and, and that gives it a very tight feel. Um, so the goal with what we're trying to do is, is not eliminate so much those medians, but kind of cut them down in certain places, reconfigure those to give more sightlines uh, for vehicles traveling along the roadway. But in addition to that, we're, we're utilizing the, the cartway, I'll say in a smarter manner, keeping the medians in place, but reducing them such that we can provide lanes, uh, for vehicles traveling on Sherry. Currently the lanes on there are at most 11 feet. You know, four, 11 foot lanes and, and 10 foot left turn lanes. And we'd be looking to increase those, uh, to 12 feet. You know, for the increased truck traffic, but also, also for, for safer vehicular traffic overall throughout there. Uh, so that, that's our goal with regard to, to Sherry, uh, is kind of upgrading that, providing clear zones where we can, you know, on the long side of the roads, uh, optimizing the, the sightlines as you're traveling along the roadway, uh, there. And was, was noted about the, the turnpike slip ramp, which we are endeavor to pursue to update the, the planning commission on where we stand with that. We did have a meeting with the township staff, turnpike, uh, PennDOT and the applicant, uh, where we discussed the possibility of that, um, connection. And the, uh, I don't want to say the ball's in our court now, but we are, uh, preparing a study for the, the turnpike to evaluate, uh, how that would operate so they can make a determination on, uh, allowing that connection to be made, uh, moving forward. Uh, again, where we stand with PennDOT, the, the information that was submitted to the township as part of the land development application was submitted to PennDOT at the same time. And we anticipate a review from them in the, in the next week or, or so. So we'll get their feedback, but they did give us some preliminary feedback on, on the, uh, site and the intersection, and, and we've incorporated all their, their comments, uh, into our design, uh, currently. So happy to answer any additional questions. If I missed something, uh, please let me know. But that is, that's where we stand and that is our, uh, proposed, uh, package moving forward.
Eric, uh, question. Dennis Martin, um, coming from 113 northbound on 100. Is there a turn lane for them to go into Sh- Sherry?
There currently, yeah. There currently is not, and the, the capacity, uh, analysis indicate that that's, uh, not necessary. Uh, with regard to the site specifically, I mean, we anticipate 80% of the truck traffic or so is going to be coming to and from the turnpike. Uh, a lot of the workers will be doing that, but, um, you know, we're not, that's not being provided with this plan.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Eric?
I do see someone that has a hand up. Hold on one second. Mr. Baker?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to know, uh, um, I'm just a concerned citizen. Who was speaking? Is Eric Austin and Chuck? Who's he represent? Does he represent?
Eric Austin Chuck. I'm with Traffic Planning and Design, and we are the traffic consultant for the applicant.
Uh, I don't, I don't, I don't know who the applicant is. I'm sorry.
The applicant is Autobahn Land Development Corporation. I don't want to misstate the, the corporation name, but Autobahn Land.
Okay. Do you have any information about who's the contractors or anything?
I, I do not, but you know, I don't know if that, the, the team has gotten to that point yet, but I can let John or someone.
Yeah, um, Tyrone, this is John Nielsen. Um, we, we, we haven't gotten to the point where we picked our contractors yet. It's a very normal process that you go through development. You don't normally get out too early on the contractors. Uh, this construction probably wouldn't start till late this year, early next year. Um, so we're, we're a little early on that. We do consult with them in the, in the, uh, as we're, uh, you know, looking at our costs for what needs to be done here, but we're not quite to picking a contract yet.
Understand. Mr. John Nielsen, who do, can I respectfully ask you who you represent?
Yeah, I'm the president of Autobahn Land Development. We've been a, we're a 59-year-old family business that develops all different types of real estate from, um, you know, Autobahn Pennsylvania, near King of Prussia.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Eric, if I may.
Go ahead.
In reading some of the reviews, there's mention of using Costco's traffic in and out numbers. Are they apropos to this development at this point in time or not really? Just using those numbers?
Yeah, I, I think by Costco, you mean a possible use on the southeast quadrant of the Sherry Boulevard Route 100 intersection, which is being indicated on the screen. Um, one of the comments we received early on when we were going through the conditional use process was to consider any future traffic that might be, uh, seen from any future land development. Uh, so we did include traffic, uh, with the assumption that that would, that corner would be developed. Uh, so this, these traffic improvements do, uh, take that traffic into account. And when we prepared the study and had the assumption regarding that traffic, it was assumed that there would be a driveway opposite the main driveway for the subject parcel, which I don't know if someone can indicate where that's right. Yeah, right in there. So I think some of the comments you saw were with regard to if a development plan moves forward on that parcel, that certain considerations could be had with regard to PennDOT, um, with respect to a traffic signal at that location, um, which we had identified in our traffic study. But in, in terms of land development application, uh, that parcel is not part of the application as it currently stands, but a future consideration.
Thank you.
Who, who owns this parcel you're speaking to, Eric? Are several owners or not? Mr. Nielsen, correct?
Uh, I, I'll let Mr. Nielsen.
Yeah, no, we, we do. We, this is part of the purchase from Vanguard that property.
Okay, good.
Was originally part of the development.
Good, good.
Then the question is, do you have any idea what your, what your future use might be on that?
So certainly that type of use is, is a possibility. Uh, obviously it's a pretty, uh, you know, uh, highly visible corner. So we're not sure yet what, what would come there. We, we know there's been some interest, uh, from that type of use. And we've explored that. Um, it's just, we're not to the point where we could suggest that there's any kind of a deal that, that would put that on there. Uh, as far as traffic goes, it's a pretty, uh, what I would say it uses quite a bit of traffic. So integrating that into our improvement program certainly allows us that kind of capacity if we were able to come together.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey Dennis, this is Greg Allen. I've got a question.
Okay.
So, uh, I know there's some existing structures on this property. I think there's a farm or at least a barn type structure and some other buildings. What's the, what's the impact to those structures? Are they coming down? Are they staying up? What's the, what's the situation there in the plan?
So, so our intent is to preserve all the historical structures on the building, I mean, on the property. And, uh, we designed a plan accordingly. Um, we are working with the historical commission, uh, as well and, uh, expect to do a tour with them, uh, probably later this month. Uh, but yes, we are protecting both the barn and the silo out by Route 100. The, uh, main farm buildings that are, um, where the, where the current tenant lives, the spring houses on the property. Uh, there's a, there's a historical wall that we're, we're going to preserve. So basically anything that's historic on there, which is what Vanguard was doing, we're doing the same thing.
Okay. And then are they going to be able to be, continue to be used in the way they're used today?
So our thought is that, uh, certainly, um, renovating and restoring the historical structures is certainly something we want to do. We obviously want it to be a, a very nice looking, um, uh, restoration. And the answer is we would like to use them for their current use residential. It's not, uh, to say that there might not be some association, possibly security, uh, that would use the, uh, use the buildings, uh, for the entire, um, distribution, uh, development. But at this time, our attempt is to, our intent is to use it for a residential. After we get done polishing up and really, really tuning up. But i- in, in conjunction with the way historical restoration should be.
Okay. Does the barn have practical use as far as making it so the property?
That, we can always use barns for maintenance. It's, it's a good place to store stuff. Um, the answer is yes. Whether this will be part of that distribution area maintenance, I'm not certain. But certainly maintaining those buildings can be part of, uh, certainly the barn and the silo areas certainly can be part of that. I would suspect the residential uh, use in the existing tenant house would, uh, would certainly utilize those other buildings as well for even their own means.
All right. Thank you, John.
Hi Tara, this is Greg Bozier. Do you have, can I ask a question of Eric Austin Chuck?
Uh, sure.
Yes. On Sherry, did you mention that all the lanes were going to be 12 feet wide? And on the next plan?
muted. My apologies. Certainly for the, you know, for the most part, uh, at our, our first, what we're calling the main access, where we're going to direct most of the, the, the truck traffic to, uh, enter. They are, uh, 12 feet wide in that location. As we travel along Sherry, I'd say the through lanes by and large are 11 and a half to 12 feet, uh, some over 12 feet, depending on how the alignment worked out. I believe there is a, uh, 10 foot left turn lane maintained. Uh, and I think you're referring to the one comment in your letter, Greg, about that location. And it's certainly something we can look at if we can, um, look at a wider lane in that location. But, you know, by and large, the through lanes are 12 feet long and 12 feet wide, pardon me. And, uh, I believe there are some left turn lanes that are maintained at 10 as we approach the eastern edge of Sherry.
Okay. And I, I didn't see your traffic studies, but I had one other question. Before, when we had spoke that we, it was discussed there by Tanner with the JW Pepper access that that was going to become a four-way stop. Has that been the case in your study?
We evaluated as a two-way stop. Uh, that was based on some discussions we, we had with the township staff regarding Sherry. Um, it's analyzed currently as a two-way stop control. But, you know, we're talking about signage and, and operations more than, than construction. So, you know, if, if that's a, a question that we need to evaluate, we can certainly do that.
Yeah. If we could just get the site distance evaluated there. So that way we can see if it would warrant a, a four-way stop.
Certainly. I know we, you know, and, and we had, um, some input from, from, uh, McMahon regarding site distance and providing always stop at our access points. Uh, you know, due to the curb, curving nature of Sherry, uh, so we can, we can incorporate some of those discussions as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Everybody, this is, uh, Dean Kaiser from McMahon Associates, uh, Townships Traffic Engineer. Uh, I just want to mention to those points, uh, in our, in my review, we did look at those internal intersections on Sherry Boulevard. And I have some concerns obviously with the, um, the site distances at, at both access points. So I, I made a recommendation that, that they need to be looked at a little bit harder. And, you know, I, I feel the safest condition for both access points might be an always stop. And that's what I ended up reporting in, uh, in my review letter.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you.
Tara, can I jump in? Steve Buck here.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. Steve Buck here from Stevens and Lee on behalf of Pepper PA Partners, and Greg Boja from Boja Engineering is our traffic engineer as well, and Lee Painter from Pepper PA is on the, at the meeting as well. Tara, if you could just do me a favor and point out Pepper's building across from the, thank you. So Pepper PA Partners owns that building that Tara's pointing to and leases it to JW Pepper and Sons. They've been there for a number of years now, and obviously, their main concern with the project overall is traffic, as has been discussed a little bit here, but the circulation and the access points and the volume here. So we're not given that, this is sort of preliminary tonight, just an overview, not going to go into a lot of detail, and Mr. Nielsen has agreed to meet with us with his consultants and Pepper's traffic consultants to try to come up with things that work for everybody. So I think for now, we can leave it at that, but we will be back for future meetings just to try to make sure that, you know, this is done in the the best and safest way possible for the amount of use that Cherie Boulevard gets at this point and the amount of additional use that will be put on it in the future.
Okay. Well, I'm sure John will work with you and will hopefully come up with a good compromise with everything.
Absolutely.
Sounds good.
Do we have any other comments or questions, anybody?
No.
Yes, I have a question. I'm sorry.
Excuse me, who's speaking and?
I'm sorry. My name is Tyrone Baker.
Okay, where do you live?
I live in the, I live in the area. I don't, do I have to disclose where I live?
Well, we like to know who who's being talked, you know, talking.
Yeah, I live in the township. I just don't want to disclose, you know, for. I don't want to. All right, I have a question for Mr. Nielsen. What is the content or the the usage of the warehouses, the three warehouses, the one for a million square foot, 600,000 square foot, and the other one for 150,000? Who, who tenants that would be occupying those warehouses? Or do you have any proposed tenants?
We do not have any proposed tenant. We currently own and manage about 5 million square feet, so we get a variety of tenants from all sizes. The million-square-foot building, obviously, with the pandemic, there's been a huge demand increase for larger warehouses, given the last mile distribution and the, what I would call the transition from, you know, everybody shopping at stores to getting their goods delivered. It's created a pretty significant demand. So we don't have a specific tenant in mind, but we certainly see a huge need in our area for a distribution type facilities, and we're just expanding what we've already have. And, you know, this this location is is great because it's right on the turnpike, and it it minimizes the traffic, you know, through through the community by utilizing the major thoroughfare.
Understood, but that's a significant investment to not have secured any tenants. You know, I don't know if the self-handguard has taken place already, but that's a significant investment, just not have any tenants or not having, you know, tenants on, you know, already inclined.
Well, we're certainly continuing the process of identifying one or two or three tenants, and we will continue that process with development. Like I said, we've been in in the business for, you know, nearly six decades and very used to tenant turnover. We used to tenants, you know, extending their leases and finding tenants these days has been has been pretty promising, given the, given the current conditions of the need for this distribution. So we're obviously understanding the business risks here, and we certainly expect that in the long run, there'll be plenty of interest in these, in these, in this location in particular.
Right, those tenants that are situational, as you say, are you able to disclose those tenants or are they private?
We don't have anybody specifically for this, for this site yet. As far as the distribution goes, I mentioned the other word Costco earlier, just because they contacted us. But they would not be on this side anywhere of Cherie Boulevard. They're, they're looking for more of a corner location.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dennis, I have a couple of questions. If nobody else has their hand up.
Okay, go ahead, Laura.
On behalf of the EAC, Mr. Nielsen, thank you for coming to our January meeting. I know we had a vibrant discussion about the different land use options for for various spaces of this plan. We expect to have our formal review letter completed by the end of the week, but there was one question I had regarding one of the items that was discovered through the environmental site assessment, both Phase 1 and 2, and that had to do with some of the underground leak from the Sunoco Service Station, 391 feet southeast of the property. We noticed that there was follow-up that was going to go through with the DEP that was unable to be completed because of COVID, and I was just wondering if that was something that we could have completed along with any subsurface investigation regarding any contamination of that site. I don't know if we have an environmental consultant with us tonight, but I just wondered if there was any update on that.
Sure. Ron, do you have any, the latest update on that?
So yeah, so we we hired Earth Engineering as our environmental consultant, but they're actually not on the call tonight. But last I had spoken with them is that they had a request in probably in November or December and to follow up with those plans. But supposedly, you know, with COVID going on and everybody not being in the office and working from home, they they were just going to continue to follow up and see if they can find that, those reports. But but I will, we'll reach out to Earth Engineering and and we'll make sure that we have that answer for the next EAC meeting.
Thank you. The other thing that I had been thinking about since our January meeting, you know, I know we had spoke about the feasibility and the preparation of these larger buildings for the facilitation of solar or other renewable energy. As you know, the township is going through an energy transition planning process, looking to transfer or transition into renewables and reduce our carbon footprints and looking at the size of this development. It's going to be a pretty, towards the top of the list of developers or business owners that we would want to work with as we continue our transition process. I just wondered, not being an expert on trucking or distribution centers, if any of the development of the actual warehousing has sustainable practices for future tenants. I know that the the distribution industry is also becoming more and more sustainable, and they're looking at different things, you know, to to offset their carbon emissions and I just thought I would pick your brain and ask if you knew anything about what might make this facility attractive to companies that have sustainability principles in mind.
Sure, solar is the first one that comes to mind. We talked about that. We're talking about increasing the steel size of the columns to be able to handle the roof load. That's, that's a big one we hear frequently. We're also investigating the lead lead possibilities on these buildings as well. And again, those things, you know, could, could some conflict with some of the township ordinance as far as lighting and whatnot is possible, but certainly balancing your your desires and needs as well as the township ordinances and requirements. We'll find the happy medium there that works. We certainly understand the need for sustainability, and we're going to continue to to march through that process. Both lead, solar is definitely on our radar for these things. And I just had a call with a company that does a lot of large-scale rooftop installations this, earlier this week, and it was exciting to hear what's happening. As I've said always, Pennsylvania is not the most solar-friendly. So they're, they're getting there. I think there's going to be a big push shortly. I'm expecting in the next year or two, you're going to see some changes. They have to do it where community solar is going to be able to be piped back into the line, and you're going to get full credit for the energy costs. I think it'll, it'll pop, but at the moment, they're just, they're just a few steps away. So solar is definitely one. We're looking at lead. And if there's other things, as you know, I'll be attending your meetings, you know, feel free to share, and we're here to see what we can do to do our part.
Great, thank you.
Anything else, Laura?
Nope, I don't think so. Everything else will be summarized in our letter, hopefully out by the end of this week.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything we want to run by the Audubon group this evening? Anybody in the general public? Do you have any comments that you'd like to add or discuss? Well, everybody's quiet tonight.
I think we're good.
Okay. All right. Well, I say with that, I thank Audubon Group for coming.
I do apologize. Look, I got a question for Mr. Nielsen real quick.
Excuse me, could you identify yourself again, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Tyrone Baker.
Who was that again?
Tyrone Baker.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Nielsen, with with the current state of the US with the non-inclusiveness and, you know, for diversity's sakes, have you taken any steps to to, for construction and make sure that, you know, construction will be diversified and be inclusive upon all nationalities?
You know, we have. Is that a, is that a question for this committee?
That's a question for John.
Yeah, but that, we're doing Planning Commission.
Yeah, we're Planning Commission here.
Address Mr. Nielsen. They, they have a business that you, I'm sure you could contact him and talk to him about different policies that they have.
Understood.
Okay. I, I understand you have questions, but we're, we're in the planning stage of the building and the property at this point. So.
Understood, thank you.
All right, thank you. Sorry.
Seems like we're done. Then Dennis?
As far as I'm concerned, I think so. John, you need to add anything or your group?
I really don't. I look forward to working with everybody, as I've said all along, you know, all across the township, and Mr. Baker wants to reach out, feel free. You know, we want to be a good community partner, as I've always said, and I always appreciate an open dialogue. And hopefully, we can, we can have real success here and meet the needs and find that balance.
All right.
Dennis, can I, Dennis, can I also just add that once the remainder of the review letters come in, I will get them out to the applicants? And just a reminder that the applicant is going to be at the zoning hearing board on the 17th at 7:00. And then they'll be back to you guys once they've had a chance to go over the review letters.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
All right, Rich, go ahead.
I'll move that we adjourn. I'm ready to go.
All right, I have a motion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll say, I can.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, all right, before I hold up, just to let everybody know. Well, Tara announced the meeting next Wednesday. Is it next Wednesday or the?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
And the border supervisors is on the 8th at 7:30.
Yep, and all meetings are held Zoom due to COVID-19. And with that, I thank everyone for their participation this evening.